Okay, I'd like to call the January twenty four, twenty twenty four Lower South County Plan and Commission meeting. Since this is the pre-order. I'll be facilitating up into the election of the Chairperson for the Planning Commission. So, of course, the first item on the agenda is the election of officers for twenty twenty four. And do I have a motion for Chairperson?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion for Manus. Second Chairperson. Do I have a second? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Manus, Manus, congratulations. The meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mike. Our next order is obviously the nomination of a Vice Chair. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair? Thank you. Do I have a second? Any other candidates? All right, closing the slate, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, John. Okay. With that organizational line being cleared for twenty twenty four, we'll move to the minutes from the December meeting. Everyone should have that document from the email from Patty. Any modifications, additions, deletions?
None.
Okay, hearing none, a motion to approve is submitted. I'll make them. Thank you.
That's second.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? Thank you very much. Sure, so then we've got that covered. So, next order is we have a new member joining us. Happy to say, you know, it's always, sorry to see someone else leave, Brad Landis. Did a great job serving us for several years, but personal professional limitations included him from continuing to do so. Want to introduce yourself quickly and take us through your background a little bit?
Sure, Julia Earl. I've only been in Lower South County for a few years, so I still get to know it. I work in Popstown and from the Radnor area prior to this, where I raised our kids. And I work in for a nonprofit in trail development mainly, and I'm a landscape architect and a planner.
And this is not your first experience with the Planning Commission, I believe, correct?
No, in Radnor Township, I was on the Planning Commission there for a couple of sessions, although it seems like it's a long time ago. So I'm hoping I remember how to do it.
I'm sure it'll come back. It's kind of like riding a bike.
Yeah.
And so we're happy to have Julia for a couple of reasons. One, always nice to have a new member come on. Two, I think, you know, several of us have been sort of lobbying to have a woman join the group here for a while. I have three daughters and I'm trying to tell them they need to be involved in civic affairs. And it's kind of hard to tell them that when they don't see us represented, so welcome aboard, thank you. All right, first plan review, Shahada Lederach Crossroad Development. Yeah, looking here.
Yep.
Good evening.
I'm Anthony Brown with Corso Consulting of the Civil and Vehicles Project. You know, the Pat and Josh Patterson is out here tonight. We were there last fall, I believe, for a review of this planning. We discussed circulation on the site. Configuration, driveway, things like that. Reminder, this is at the southwest intersection, Holly'sville Pike and Lederach Crossroad. I'm proposing three twin homes in Village District. We had previously shown at the bottom right of the plan, a one-way driveway into the development. I've discussed with you last time. I've modified that to be an emergency access only. And we have moved the existing driveway to the home to the north there. Over to a shared access point. Kind of dropped the flag of that lot. Up the east side of that hole, or that's in accordance with a previously approved subdivision plan. It actually created one of the lots on this property. So what we've shown is basically a mimicking of that old approved subdivision plan. The driveway there on the far right, bottom corner will serve that existing dwelling. It'll connect up to the existing pavement and will remove, of course, the existing driveway out to Holly'sville Pike in that area. So then we're proposing bollards to block the remainder of that paved section that comes up into the site. We'll designate that as an emergency access only. So we run turning plans for fire truck and trash truck. It often work in this configuration. We've extended, or should say we widened the other main access track to development, top of crossroad. And we widened the pavement area behind the homes. To provide a twenty-four foot access drive aisle from there. And as we discussed, we provide a loop around the back of the property. That's two-way traffic proposed as well. To provide better circulation to anybody coming in and out of the site through the main drive there across road. So, any comments or questions before I get into the waivers? I'll take those now.
Yeah, on the turning radius for the emergency vehicles?
Sure.
I'm not sure if I'm reading these correctly or not, but it looks like you have to go up on, like, over the sidewalk in a few places and up on a retaining wall to get through the driveway?
Those are kind of from Steffi Butler as well. It's a little compliance essentially. We had a couple tweaks to make for that retaining wall. The guardrail is shown. I think the template was drawn before that was put in. That'll have to be tweaked a little bit. The rest of those lines are hard to read, I understand. We're going to produce a plan that has colored lines or something that actually shows the wheel line. So I think the bold line you're looking at most likely is the vehicle overhang. Which is substantial on the back of the truck.
Right.
As you may know. And we're kind of said that that's going to hit, you know, potentially things on the side of the driveway, things like that. We're looking out for that as well. In particular, that guardrail. For the end of the access track.
So it'll be in compliance for like the largest truck?
Yes. And I think it's pretty much in compliance right now, barring one minor tweak, I think, toward the end of the emergency access track.
And the middle of it too, looks like it's all over the place.
Yeah, I think it's more of a clarification on the drawing. Better illustrate those lines.
What's the trash truck movement going to be for the single home that's on one thirteen?
That we didn't have to look at. Assume they come down Holly'sville Pike, as they look today. We just pull up to a towder or something on the side of the road. So they'll put their trash cans out through the bollards onto that spot. So the bollard is placed beyond their driveway. That's what the pointer is, if you mind. So they would have two-way movement for that single residence in and out of that driveway.
Signed, provided, no access, blah, blah, blah.
Correct. The secondary benefit is that emergency access would be paved, could be used for pedestrian access. To Holly'sville Pike. I mean, probably not ever going to be used as an actual emergency access, we hope. So it'll be there for pedestrians' use as well.
And for snow removal, would there be a homeowners association that'll cover?
Correct. Homeowners Association for Stormwater or Stormwater Management. Any shared utilities, snow removal, lawn care, things like that.
What's, what's the driveway situation in front of, in front of them? Because it's hard to tell on, on the drawings.
Where exactly?
In, in front of it, in front of the units.
So those are uh, we're showing garages behind the twin homes.
Yeah.
There's just parking behind each garage, two spaces per unit.
So it's, they're not, it's not an actual driveway, it's just going to be a couple of spaces?
Correct. We have garage door on one side, just the back of the building on the other side of each unit. So two units, two spaces per unit. Then across that, we have six kind of overflow spaces shown for anybody's use.
How, how deep is the aisle there? Is that, say, sixteen feet?
Uh, parking spaces are eighteen feet. The aisle is twenty-four feet between those spaces.
Behind the garage doors.
Those are eight foot feet. A typical parking space. Dimensions provided there.
Okay. Even on the home on the right side?
Yes.
Not that one, but one further down.
Yeah, all the way around.
It's, any other general questions?
Yeah, so we have letters from Michelle and Stephanie. Which mostly discuss waivers and a few other items that are work compliant. But responsible, except for a couple that I'll get into later. I'll start by just going through the list of waivers. First is for road widening requirements on both frontages, first being Holly'sville Pike. Co-reQUIRES of eleven-foot lane. Sorry, a twelve-foot lane. And a eight-foot shoulder. We're not providing that on Holly'sville Pike in the twenty-five foot strip on our frontage down there. I think it's practical to provide that type of widening in that location, especially in, in the village district. Stephanie has said she basically agrees with what we're showing now, which is a small widening which will accommodate a five-foot bike lane in the future, if that goes in along Holly'sville Pike. I think that's consistent with the walkable letter X study that's been going on with tension.
That's on one thirteen?
Yes.
And is there a curve there too, or just?
There's no curve there. We're not proposing a curve.
Okay.
But I think the total widening we're showing about four feet or so, we've provided a five-foot lane from the existing white stripe at the end of the road.
Stephanie, you're good with that?
Yes, we, we talked as a group with the walkable letter X study team and discussed the fact that in this location, that really is what we're looking, looking to show with the, the village setting. It is impractical to look at a twelve-foot lane and an eight-foot shoulder in this area. And this is consistent with what we are recommending in the study and, and will work with what we're recommending in the future for this location.
And does a three-foot widening, you digging into a, a dirt shoulder amount?
We are, somewhat.
Okay.
There's an existing sort of access, I think it used to be in that forty-five foot strip.
Okay.
So the grade does drop down a bit there, but there'll be a little bit of grading to do in that area.
Then a little bit of
Put the access in any
A little sway out there? Inside of the road?
We need to run more stormwater counts along the side of the road for potential, you know, cross pipes under the driveway, things like that. We will install those if needed.
Well, and that's the, the high point of this crossroad, everything's coming down the hill there. I gotta imagine you're going to need a pipe underneath that driveway.
Well, we're not adding a whole lot of runoff to that particular area where it's graded, but we'll run the calculation certainly. Stephen, Stephen.
Can I just add that we also understand and I think we recommended that obviously any curb or access ramps would be deferred as well, should the future project include sidewalk in this location. So we'd rather not see the curb at this point because we don't know what it's going to look like there for the, the length of that frontage along one thirteen yet.
Correct, that's actually another waiver that's coming up. We'll come back to that.
Okay.
The same section requires similar widening along the crossroad. On that frontage.
I would add that the, the, the requirements on cross is an eleven-foot lane and a six-foot shoulder. And I think we are okay with what you're showing with the eleven-foot lane, I think you're showing eleven-foot lane and a five-foot shoulder, again, to accommodate the improvements that we are identifying in the walkable letter X study. It is in a transition area as you're on the left side of this plan, you know, approaching the village. So we do, we do want to see that width along this location.
We're showing a ten-foot lane currently, which is what's there now. We can make respect to eleven feet, they, then five feet from there.
I think the concern with the ten-foot lane is this road is a state road. It has got a lot of truck traffic on it. You know, so I know it's there today as a ten-foot lane, but with the requirement being eleven and six, I think we would prefer to see the eleven. But again, remember, these are state roads as well. They will have to go through the H O P process as well.
Yeah, for now, we'll plan to make that eleven-foot lane every inch, mostly by feet.
Right. And, and you will have curb there?
I think we're going to add curb there. It's not too current. Recommendations from Stephanie and Michelle to add curb there. So we'll show curb line, frontage. That may trigger additional storm inlets and storm pipe there as well. You're collecting water on curb line. I will address that when we run those calculated.
Okay.
Next section, waiver would be section one forty-two, forty-one, which doesn't require sidewalks. Four areas curb, storm sewer, shared access. Just discussed it already. Sounds like we are going to provide curb on front of the crossroad. But not Holly'sville Pike this time, so we asked for waiver determining that. As well as the required sidewalk or handicap ramps at that twenty-five foot area along Holly'sville Pike. And we're basically just going to the majority of those improvements on crossroad at this point.
Michelle's a little
deferral.
Right.
Yeah.
You say the, the deferral on a waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
Our next section has to do with clear site triangles and safe site distances, section one forty-two thirty-three C. Might can scroll to site triangle exhibit that put together. This section requires clear site triangles on certain drivers in the township. It's a little unclear if we are requiring a site triangle on Holly'sville Pike for that driveway, because it's a residential, single residential lot. We're showing it, I know it's come up. If it is required, it's a three-hundred-foot site, clear site triangle. On Holly'sville Pike, which we don't think is reasonable, forced to show that. We'll provide that. We are showing in orange, if you can see it on there, probably not, the required PENDAT site distances, because the second part of this waiver request. So when you're exiting that driveway from that house to the left. We're unable to provide the technically required site distance that PENDAT regulations will require. Now, we are providing distance up to the current signalized intersection. Really, it's fourth now, so we're moving the driveway that's existing further away from the intersection. We're increasing that site distance by about forty-something feet. So if a waiver is necessary, we'll ask for a waiver of that.
Anthony, can I ask a, a question with that? I know you can't provide the desirable distance, which is, you know, the, the standard distance, but there is the minimum required that will need to be provided. So I think you do need to show that calculation and make sure that you can provide that. I think you can, when we, when we looked at it. So I think you just need to respond with at least providing the minimum required at this location.
I believe we can provide the minimum required. And again, that's all part of PENDAT's purview that
It is. I just want to make sure everybody understood that you, you will still meet PENDAT's requirements. You just can't meet their desirable site distance. You can meet their minimum required site distance. And it is, and it is an improvement from the existing condition today. So I, I just wanted to make sure that point was made.
Okay.
Before you move on, let's talk about the site triangle.
We're still talking about site triangle design as well, both driveways. The other driveway. I guess the attachment interpretation of this is that it's required. Even though it's
We'd like you, even though the organ says you have to go in three hundred feet, and Stephanie and I have talked about this, everybody comes in saying the same thing. We'd like you to show the clear site triangle going seventy-five feet to the site. For both of them.
Okay. So I'm showing a seventy-five foot triangle.
With three hundred foot legs.
Right.
On one thirteen.
Go to the one I wanted.
So, let's start on one thirteen. So that's a three hundred foot leg. I can show a seventy-five foot side triangle. That's still a required weight with that.
But are you showing any landscaping down there? Have you got seventy-five feet? Do you put that up?
I think the existing building, I mean, from to the south is going to be the triangle.
But no, there's no landscaping proposed.
There's not. There's existing shed, there may be existing landscaping property.
Okay.
There's not much we can do with that.
We're talking, it's already an improvement.
Right.
But it now.
But we wanted to make sure that he's not adding any landscaping in that triangle, so that it's not making it worse. Okay?
We'll show that and keep it clear.
Okay.
So this one looks okay, but crossroad?
Crossroad does not. It's early to figure seventy-five foot when you approach on first twin building we're showing. What does work in that configuration is the sixty-foot side triangle that I'm showing. So our understanding is, you know, you want these buildings as close to the right of way as possible. Get that village-type feel of this road, of this area. We put them basically up against the legal right of way there, as close as we can. To stay out of a seventy-five foot triangle, you have to move that building over. Which one would be more from the next building, the next twin building? Doesn't make a lot of sense to us. It's about seventy-five feet. This is a low-volume driveway. I'm not sure that's really necessary there. We can keep all the landscaping out of whatever we agree upon for a triangle there. We might ask for one street tree to go on the right side where it's shown currently.
Could you stagger the unit such that that first unit moves back and then you would do the same thing with the other two and then you wouldn't have a uh, be coming back?
Is that, I mean, I'm be curious, Stephanie's thoughts, like, is that really, is it necessary?
Seventy-five foot side triangle?
Yeah, in that location, is it really necessary?
I mean, they, they're going to show that they meet the PENDAT site distance for an egressing driveway, but the site triangles are really for different it's a different intention, right? Michelle, I mean, it's really for it's not for the, necessarily the egressing movement, but it is for, like she said, like Michelle mentioned, the vegetation, the landscaping, the built, like the you're coming up to that intersection and you're looking, as you're approaching the main road, right? You're looking to the left and to the right and those will be in those areas.
Stephanie, what do you think of adding note to the record plan saying that they have to maintain any landscaping within that clear site triangles to no lower than maybe fourteen feet height? I mean, they
Yeah, I think, I think that would, that would also help the situation. You know, what you don't want is, right, something going out of control and really, really restricting that view. I would think, I would think a note certainly would. I'm, I'm assuming this has happened in the past, certainly in the village areas. I can see where it will be a challenge to, to meet the site triangle ordinance with village commercial settings.
Yeah, it seems maybe we can't have it all, right? Like, we have to put it up as close to the road as we can, but then the we got a side triangle that clicks with that.
We, we
Correct.
Well, your thing broke down, the town has already so long.
There's a stop sign there?
Yeah.
Yes. Also, near the intersection, it's a pretty busy intersection. We're pointing down. There's not a lot of fast-moving traffic on crossroads in this particular location. We get down farther, there is.
Yeah, this location will have obviously a lengthy queue of traffic heading into the village. So that is it's just the nature of the way it is at this, at this location. So I would agree the traffic is going to tend to be approaching this area a little bit slower.
Don't be stopped in front of a truck. So, Stephanie, the two trees that are in the sixty-foot side triangle?
Um, I guess I need a, what type of trees would those be? I don't know, Michelle, if they, it didn't put them.
Sorry, they said you was shade trees, street tree.
So I, I think I would be okay as long as, as Michelle mentioned, if we, if we required a note that they be, that they be maintained.
And they go in at a reasonable height so that you can see.
Right.
That'd be the HOA. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're trying not bringing twins closer together just to get
Yeah, right.
Okay. You telling?
Did we section one forty-two thirty-five B two, as far as the parking areas, not be located closer than fifteen feet to extract boundary line. We are showing might quite want to go back to the first sheet. Between the farthest right unit on crossroad and their property line farther, sorry. Shorter ten-foot setback to the building and the parking, which is allowed by zoning, but the south requires fifteen-foot setback track boundary. Rest for waiver to allow a ten-foot setback or the fifteen feet right there along the parking area behind the Dodge, essentially. That's what we're talking about. Obviously, it's a coincident that parking space with the building and the garage. Light show where it is. We think it's reasonable to allow less commercial property.
Patient all the way with parking.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah. Next section is one forty-two thirty-five C, which is sidewalks, curb and storm sewer in parking lots are required. We are providing curb sidewalks, storm sewer for the most part of this parking area. The exception is around these garages. We're not showing curbing. The intent is not to show, provide curb there. Because people generally don't want curb. You're behind the garage when they're pulling in and out, personal vehicles all the time. But I think it's necessary in those particular areas for protection of landscape islands and things like that. We are showing curb along the main entrance drive and the loop drive in the back. And the additional parking spaces there. It's really just up around the houses over there, showing curb.
That first peninsula island does, doesn't have curving on it?
It does.
Second, so
Yeah. We turned it up in the It's a bit of a gradient issue there.
Curving of the grading issue?
Uh, no, because it raises the grade. You want the water to run off that. And try to avoid a wave of water, open there as an inlet to continue down into the parking area, be collected in the parking area.
And all that runoff from that adjacent commercial property comes down onto this property, so we don't want to impede that.
Do you have a favor, Michelle?
Yes.
Any comments on that? Next section is one forty-two forty-two E one C. Which is street trees required along all access driveways that serve five or more residential rolling units, both the six units. We've asked for waiver, partial waiver to not provide street trees along one side of the main access drive and both sides of the emergency access, if that's actually required by this current section. Being that it's not full-service access to the developments, emergency access. Wouldn't think it's our street trees along that drive.
And that's your sight lines.
Right. Wow, yes, of course.
And you're already putting buffer plannings behind those two units right there?
Well, those are replacement trees. There are several trees on property that we're gonna take it down. Technically, no buffers are required. Within the village commercial district. Would you need to provide some screening? We'll talk about a minute here.
Down to the bottom there, that's the garage.
This is a single family residence. They do an outbuilding in the back. It's right up on the property line.
Why don't we hold on that? Cause I, I'd like to either figure out if there's another spot on the property or if there's a. Off track place that we can put them, that will think be all right, we'll, we'll take them and figure out where to fly them.
Yeah, we can hold off on the three. And we are gonna put together a more detailed landscape plan, uh, turn the final plans, mission to that. And they'll provide reps. Better guidance system. Should be placed where, not much.
So in your next turn, you'll have the landscape plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Showing for landscaping now is more of a compliance type. Quantitative things to show them. It'll provide quarters, what's, what's required. We're gonna come back to that area in a second, but first, uh, the engineering standards, section one oh seven two D and one oh seven five A requires minimum eighteen inch storm sewer. Local building fifteen inch storm sewer uh, throughout the site. We provide calculations for that to Michelle.
And it's gonna be privately owned, not within public driveway, so I have no concerns with her.
Okay, so most of these are good. I'd just like to hold off on uh, on the street tree calculation and figure out whether this might end up showing first.
And going through the letters, we do have a couple additional potential waivers to request or to clarify what's needed. Tell me the comment about. Perimeter landscaping for the entire parking area, parking lot, which is section one forty-two thirty-five B four. Um. I think she's referring to probably the access aisles. Mainly along the southern property boundary.
Yes, yes. Especially where that um, um, outlet type is.
Yep.
So we'd like you to at least enhance that area with more landscaping. Along there, and I don't know, I don't know, but maybe you could look into providing some shrubs along the top side of that retaining wall.
Yeah, so that's a retaining wall. Record that out, it goes along the. The lower end of the, the lower edge of the lot there.
Especially as you come to, as you might come down from unit four, I guess, that driveway. You have to straight down if body.
So technically the code requiring five foot landscape area there. Gross. We can't provide that with the current layout. As there's not enough room between the top of the wall and the drive aisle and the guardrails proposed there.
Okay, it's only.
We could probably fit in, we have two, three feet in there. There's potentially room for some shrubs. Another alternative would be a fence. If you're worried about headlight glare, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
There are already, but. That's not perfect, again. That's cool. The dimes, probably average three to four feet, but the highest part of the back four there, but about. Like we brought things out there, it's about five or six. What do you, what do you shine your headlights in? Field? You're six feet up above ground?
What, there?
Yeah, in that corner.
Yeah, well, so that's why I was showing John, the satellite view, there's a ton of trees, so that residents to the south there.
He's pretty well booked, pretty well booked.
I think there are clear a lot of that, so that's why I'm saying we'll hold off on the street trees, because you may wanna try to. Get that back in there. Like, every time those cars are coming in and out, those people can get that all.
Yeah, and the next house is down in the flag lot there.
Yeah. But where your emergency access road is going, that's pretty wooded today.
Yes, that'd be all cleared out.
Right.
Okay. Is that swamp water gonna be directed toward the house?
It's directed to the property corner. There. Mm-hmm.
Is the property to the south in the DC zone just as well? Or does it end?
It is immediately to the south is in the BC district. To the west, that is not.
And I think that to the south, you're gonna have to assume that there may be a. Something going on there someday. So if there are trees there now, cause you know, creating a buffer, you may need. Something on both properties, so that in the future, if that area is developed in the same kind of density as this property. Both, both sides of the property line are doing their share with that. Buffer.
Well, yeah, there's no buffers required in the BC district. Ready to talk about screening of the parking areas. Anything else? So I don't know if we need to request a waiver. Or the. Either a fence or reduced landscape area along the top of the wall. Cause that's what I'm looking for.
I think I'm hearing that um, you could ask for a waiver, but they wanna see a more detailed landscape.
Well, again, you can. Come back to this with the next place.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. We are gonna do our best to provide screening there.
Okay. Yeah, whether we call it, you know, as part of upper for the wall, we should start screening for the adjacent property, yeah. Now we can figure out where's the best place to put it. We might have to put it right on top of that wall for you. That would probably be problematic, but.
Right.
Put it in the spot that.
And you know, after just move that whole loop drive up into the side a few feet, but that is not gonna be a continuous. Emergency access drive, we want that necessarily. Uh, one more waiver if you need to tell her. For Michelle's letter. Is a waiver uh, section one forty-two thirty-six F. Which requires twenty-four foot wide. Drive aisles uh, in parking lots, the two-way traffic flow. So we are providing forty-four feet between the twin homes. Uh, and the six parking stalls in the south, and there's also on the right side of that. So anywhere behind the homes, probably twenty-four feet. But the loop drive around the back corner is at twenty feet. I think that's adequate. In this situation per se vehicular movements.
I don't have a concern per se for this requirement, but um. There's been uh, questions about the truck turning movements and for fire trucks, so I'd like to see that first.
Just be a bunch of words.
Right.
Thank you. A little bit more. More, we'll clarify that, but yeah. Otherwise, no opposition to that. So.
And so what's the requirement? Are we counting the garages, which is basically what we found out there, that's eighteen parking lots, not counting the garage?
They meet the parking requirements.
Right, there's eighteen, nine including garages.
Okay.
So two per unit plus six of them. Uh, another item to clarify from Michelle's layer, that's the gradient. Uh. Section one forty-two thirty-nine B one, far as gradient setback, five feet, many properties. Uh, I think there are concerns again along that southern property line. Where walls going in, walls. Proposed. Right at five feet off the property. Um, again, we need a certain amount of space. For setbacks from the top of the wall to the guardrail and the paved area. Um, trying to maintain some semblance of a buffer between that property line and the development. You know, our opinion is that you can put up snow fence or construction fencing. As a hard bound there on that property line. For contractor to not go over the property line that is working. You're gonna disturb some of that area within five feet of the property line clearly, to install a wall or whatever you're doing there. We're not changing the. Existing grade to the final grade. It's more of a regrading. Or a restoration of existing grade there, that's gonna happen.
Are you adding fill between the retaining wall and that property line?
No.
Okay, so you're not gonna change the drainage pattern negatively for that, that, those downstream property owners?
No, it'll be actually intersecting. Some drainage that comes down to that property to the south.
Okay, and you, can you construct that retaining wall without going on to the adjacent property?
Yes.
Okay, have we discussed? I don't remember if we discussed the type of retaining wall it's gonna be? Or if you want to weigh in on that? Do you know what you're proposing in?
We do not, most likely segmented block type of.
Okay.
Uh, varies from. Most of it's two, three feet up to about six feet in the back quarter there. Actual guardrail. Let's say keep that on top here.
What's the distance between the wall and the property?
Five feet.
Between the wall and the property line is five feet?
Yes.
Okay. As long as they are not going to add fill, so it's not going to impede the runoff. Onto the adjacent property and the wall can be built. Without going on to the adjacent property, I don't have any concern right now.
I'm just worried about if, if the adjacent property owner puts in a fence, they have enough room to maintain. The five feet.
Well, it doesn't have to be on his property.
Right, that's why I asked how far the property is.
Yeah, the five feet in there. It could end up landscaped, so. All right, well, so. Well, that's another question. If we get a waiver to, you know, work in that area, we could potentially put some shrubs, we saw the lower parts of the wall, below the wall. So it'd be lower to drop off to the property to the south. We can potentially put shrubs in there to provide more of a screen. Along the drive aisles.
So.
The brick wall to the block wall.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's do this. The next time you come in, why don't you have confirmed the. Truck turning radius, cause that may determine where your. Bow is in that driveway, we need to have the landscape plan, then look and see, okay, we know exactly the driveway, what's the landscape, and then we'll need something about.
Have we seen renderings of the units or that come next time as well?
Uh, we don't have any kind of final building plans. Totally. Conceptual.
Right, we'd seen it conceptualizing, it was like a little front porch with a bow straight or something.
Yeah, some of the.
Is that two forty?
Yeah.
But yeah, when you bring that back to this.
Uh, one more. Point to clarify. Definitely about. Section one forty-two thirty-four. Uh, which is title distance from street in sections. Purged in driveways. I just wanna clarify if. Or what's required here. Stephanie is saying that the driveways need to be. Separate from adjacent driveways a certain distance, uh, as required by the code section. My interpretation of the code section is referring to street intersections, not other driveways. Separation distance.
Which, which comment for London?
Uh, it's my comment number twelve.
I know, that's my. Number twelve, number twelve.
But we didn't. Um, we had the comment previously and then I, we didn't see where the information was provided, so we basically repeated our comment at that point.
Exactly.
One forty-eight thirty-four.
Stephanie, what intersection and or driveways have any thinking speak close to what might be?
I think we were looking for, we needed just to, we, we needed to see the distances. Um, and they, and I didn't have, we didn't have that labeled, so we were looking for that labeled. Um, to confirm that it met the requirements. At the, at that point, so I know they just sent this plan today, but I didn't have a chance to look at it in great detail. Um, and I had to pull up that section. Do you have that section, Michelle?
Yeah, do you wanna know what it says?
Yeah, can you repeat it for me?
Yeah, distance from street intersections, driveways shall be located as far from street intersections as is reasonably possible. Not, and not less than the following distances. Individual residential lots seventy-five feet. Multi-family residential and non-residential one hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. So it looks like. The one fifty-two is okay, right? The.
Mm-hmm.
Question is, does it apply to other driveways or street intersections?
Right, I guess.
Yeah, this whole section is driveway intersections with streets.
Right. I guess, I mean, at this point, we were interpreting it based on adjacent, the driveway with the, the new driveway access, so. If we're interpreting it uh, incorrectly, we can certainly. Change that. I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to have anything changed. At this point, it's gonna be a question of whether or not they were meeting that requirement and whether they. Provided that information, so we now have this plan that was provided today with those labels.
All right, so you've now provided and she can see it and then she'll provide a copy.
Correct.
Okay. Is there, is there anything in the township that has. A garage, but no real driveway, like parking spot in front of a garage? Like this? I, I just can't picture it, so.
Uh. That's nice. I mean, Burkefield, those, those have parking lot. Other ones that front on something now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. In the back of.
They have garage back there?
Somebody.
I do, okay. I just can't, I'm just having trouble picturing what it.
By behind the bank, don't they, don't they have a parking spot under even that? Uh, or, yeah, actually, and the one where the helmet, yes.
I just, I just can't.
The way it's set up here, it's honestly just a parking.
Yeah, that's what. That's why I can't figure out the garage, I think in front of it, it's.
But I think the ones by the, the one seal element, which will, they are.
Okay.
We just have one car. All right, so you know what you need to do for next time, right?
Yeah, that's all I have about Stephanie.
I, I have one thing I think we have to discuss, and that's where your trash is going to be located. You kept the note the same. If um, I, I think John said, John Shahada said last time that the trash was gonna be inside the building. And we asked for a typical building layout to show where the space inside the building would be to put the trash. Because if you locate it outside, then you have to show screening, and I don't know if you're gonna have enough space.
It does have um. Somewhere on, so I saw the label.
Just garage is the. It's pretty deep.
Well, yeah, but I, I, I'd still like them to show where, so that when that garage gets filled with. Stuff and the trash goes outside. We know we thought about it, and if they are gonna put it outside, then they have to provide screening per the zoning ordinance. Have you thought about that?
Yes.
Okay, and?
The intent is to. Provide space in the garage.
Okay, could you show that on the total building layout?
In like a.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I did have one more thing to clarify.
Well, I'm sorry, just before you move on to the.
Yes.
I apologize, I'm just having trouble visualizing this. So on trash day, where does everybody push their trash?
And in the driveway? The driver.
They're good, they're good.
Yeah.
Go ahead, let the pollution next to your left one.
Just clarification, we talked about this last meeting from the zoning section of Michelle's line. Three existing trees with the front yard that are across the road. Are not to be removed unless they interfere with travel occasion or health. We'd ask for determination from my last time, and then we talked about. There are existing trees about where the buildings are going, and the existing front yards on crossroad. It's essentially being conflict with what's allowed in the fourth floor. In the village of Portel District now.
I agree, I, I believe, I kind of remembered that we did talk about it, and I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I thought you thought they were okay, but if that is the case, then I'm gonna ask Patty. Excuse me, to put that in the meeting minutes, so that there's a record of. You were.
And obviously they have just survived. So you're talking about these right here, Michelle?
The existing trees, right, that they have to remove to put in the sidewalk, right, Anthony?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, can you put that in?
I know they replace those required.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Uh, if you can scroll down, Mike, to the one thirteen driveway. Um, can I just ask, has there been coordination with the Strowman property owner? For this driveway relocation? Um. Since it's outside the property boundary, so there's going to need to be. Coordination and easement. Most likely with that property owner? And a shared access?
My knowledge there has not been yet. Uh, something to clarify, probably outside of this meeting. With you and Michelle, this is a. Already approved subdivision plan and has an outstanding escrow agreements. Which require the location of that driveway when we're showing it. So. If that's.
From how long ago?
In a long time ago.
Yeah, so. Please go have a conversation with them.
I've been trying to get John to do.
Well, the reason is that you still have to go in to pen up for a permit for an H O P, so that will technically be a shared permit, a shared. Uh, co-pervantcy situation, so. That is what they will require as well. And then I guess my next question is, I know a number of our comments, the responses from the previous review were that would be. Provided in the future with the Penn dot H O P plans, um, do you have an expected timing for? For the, for that information?
Oh, you don't like to get through preliminary plans typically before we start to pen that stuff? I think at this point, we could reach out to them. This is pretty solid plan, I think, at this point. So in the near future, we'll do a scoping video or something, and we'll let you know.
Okay. I would just, I'd rather at least get it in front of them, you know, start that initial process in case for some reason they would raise some concern about the, the driveway locations. I don't, I don't think that they will, but you never know.
Yep.
To go back to the driveway, the uh people that live in that house do have a set of your plans, so it'll make it easy for John to talk to them. Because they have a set of those plans, I think the township will ask you. Uh, to revise the existing access maintenance agreement, so that this HOA is responsible for the maintenance. Of that emergency access way, that old agreement says that it's supposed to be shared, but I think it makes sense for. This HOA to take the maintenance of that driveway, and they be responsible for the new section of theirs. Is, is that alright with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Claire, does the county have any comments at this point?
He did not review the remarks plan.
Anybody from the public have questions or comments? Okay. Alright, well, yeah, convey to your client, we really appreciate for him to talk to those property owners, and we'll see you next time. Alright, uh, one ninety-six Main Street. That you reckon?
Good evening. Uh, Leo or Lasty's with me as well. The applicants, um. So just to refresh your memory, we're sort of in a holding pattern right now, uh, last month, when we were here. We discussed a uh zoning text amendment, um. This plan relies on terms of. It would allow the bank use, which is presently not allowed in the R O district, um. And it clarifies driveway access criteria for corner lots, um. Which this plan would comply with if that ordinance, um. Is eventually passed, and it's my understanding that hearing is to happen in. Um, we do have a, a review from Michelle that I wanted to discuss. Uh, it, some of the comments deal with the pending zoning ordinance, um, so we expect that those comments will be resolved when the ordinance is uh passed. Uh, but there's a couple other things I wanted to talk about, um. In her letter stated, uh. January seventeenth. Um. Number three on zoning, um. Originally, when we came in with our initial use application and. Several sketch plans in the beginning. The proposed retail building was an auto car store, all of a sudden. They're no longer part of this application, so we're showing a generic retail building. Go to the second page. Um, the one closest to your cursor, right there. Uh, just showing that as a seventy-four hundred square foot retail building, uh, there is no user identified for that. The building right on the corner is uh Chase Bank, that is a. Assigned lease, uh, which we're, um. Trying to get this approved before, and then the other buildings on the left are apartment units. Um, the drive-through for the bank. Um, just to clarify, it's not a, a teller drive-through, it is an uh ATM only drive-through. Um, ordinance requires, and ordinance doesn't really specify what the drive-through is for, um, but the ordinance requires five. Spaces for stacking. That drive-through has seven, um, I don't want a revised plan that we submitted, we showed that, so we are complying with that. Ordinance, um. I think the main zoning issue uh that Michelle raised in her letter. Needed addressed is the drainage feature, and we've spoken about this before, and it's right where Mike's cursor is. Uh, I mean, for familiar with Quarry Road, you can see it all along Quarry Road, there is a dam or weir structure that was. Struck it a long time ago, it's been there my entire life, don't know what it's for, why it was built, if it was for livestock or for some other purpose. But it exists along Quarry Road, and this drainage feature feeds into that. Goes over the dam, spills into a culvert, and then goes under the road. So obviously, when we, uh. Put the required widening and sidewalk, which we're showing on the plan. That structure would be removed, and we would put more conventional curving and storm sewer in that location. So in terms of the quarry road drainage, that whole situation will be vastly improved over what, how it functions today. The concern is as you go up. To the property where the cursor is. What is the nature of that stream? Is it? It's not regulated, we've had uh soil scientists go out there, it's not regulated by the state. Uh, however. It would require the agreement of the township engineer that it's not to be considered floodline. We're sitting down with Mike and Michelle discussing this. Kind of decided the easiest path forward is to not fight that battle, so today. We filed a revised plan, which would remove that fourth building. Uh, from that drainage channel, we would keep it open, and I just submitted that today, Mike, so I don't know if you actually have that on the. Overhead or not. Um, it did require uh a kind of rethinking the apartment units, um, and if you recall. Uh, these are originally three-story buildings with garages. And there seem to be, not the zoning issues with that, but some resistance to the three-story buildings. The scale, the height of those compared to neighboring residences. So we've actually scaled all the buildings down in terms of their size, they're now all two-story buildings. And we've eliminated the garages. It's also allowed us to avoid that. Drainage channel, so you can see that that's now. Opened on a revised plan. And we brought a rendering of, actually, you probably have this. Uh, of what these revised units would look like, so you can see there are two-story buildings with. Peaked roofs, uh, because they're long in relation to their depth, we tried to provide some interest. With different fenestration along the front roof, roof lines. Uh, gable ends, things like that. Um. We still want to maintain the look of more of a townhouse-type structure rather than an apartment. So. They will be flats, so be units on top of units, and you can see there's kind of two doors for each section. One of them would go upstairs, one of them would be for the first floor, um.
Uh, how many tall are you in?
Thirty-six units total, so on the site plan, there are two ten-unit buildings and two eight-unit buildings. Um, and again, there wouldn't be garages this time, uh, as opposed to what we were thinking about. I think part of that was kind of a, a market decision as well. That perhaps the other units were, were too large, so there is some. Uh, some desire for that, a different market niche as well.
And. You heard me, I've seen other applications about it, any ability to bury the. Front facade a little bit, I mean, you, you. You've done a lot with design to do that. But, you know, I just, I think it was one of the eternal, the game farm road in Shuang, so anything you can do to not have.
There's nothing like.
Anything they can do to.
They're not even. They shouldn't be made, that's talked about the same sentence, so. Should be careful, like somebody who lives in one of those, but uh. We tried to do that, man, it's actually with, with the window treatments, uh, there's some small roof lines, the intersecting gables, so that, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Ironically, I think you've done a great job with the front, I'm as much thinking about what they're gonna look like from the backside, yeah.
In the back, um, we have decks for all the units, so there will be um staggered decks, so the, the. Upstairs unit will not be over top of the downstairs unit, so from a plan view, it looks like it's a whole bunch of decks lined up, but in. Reality, three dimensionally, they will be staggered up and down, which. Again, is trying to give some variations of interest to the rear of those units. Um. Those two buildings would be visible, obviously, from the property adjacent, we would landscape in there as much as possible. Um, the rear of the units on the other side of that parking area would. Face green space detention basin, and there would be a considerable amount of plantings. Between the buildings and the street, so. Will also be an opportunity to kind of buffer them pretty strong, so.
Speaking for myself, not for anybody else, I'm. I'm happy to see that you went from three stories to four.
Yeah, we kind of heard that feedback, so. Been reducing them as we. I'm sorry.
Are these buildings have basements?
The ones we're looking at right there will not, they will be on slab, the other three buildings in the center will have basements, so they will have a little bit larger unit because. The downstairs unit would include the basement, that's why. Gives us some room for uh utilities as well in those units. And the grade allows it to, those would actually be walkout units. Not them, but the ones on the other side.
Right.
Um. I don't really have a whole lot else to talk about, um, I think the comments in the letter. Uh, ultimately will. Be resolved by the revisions we've made, but also zoning amendment, which we. Happened in February. Uh, the only other comment, uh, I wanted to talk about is the provision or lack of provision of loading area. Um. The only building I think that potentially. Could have a loading area, they require loading area, which would be the larger retail building, seventy-five, four hundred square foot retail building. Presently, we're not showing that because we don't know how that building will be used ultimately, um. It's very possible it would be divided into much smaller units, in that case, we don't believe a loading space, independent loading space would be necessary. If it becomes one larger unit, we could combine. The loading with the trash collection area. That's something to resolve in the future.
That would be like the state store. They, they have that.
Who has that?
Where tractor. That's where they have a. Yeah, it's on the end of the, it's actually very much like that. What's, what's the dimensions of that, of the building? How deep is that?
It is uh sixty-four feet, I believe.
That's how deep it is?
Yeah.
Well, that, right, that's. Perfect then for dividing it out.
Right, yeah, that was one of the, we wanted to keep it flexible, just because we don't know what's.
Mike, can you zoom out just a little bit to go to where the, the kind of dead end is? On, on the left-hand side of the plan? How, how many units could it be divided into, Rick?
Um. Five, I believe.
With the most.
I believe.
It could be divided up.
Yeah, yeah, but the most, I'm thinking the maximum. I, I think it was five, going by memory on that.
I mean, I guess when we first saw this plan, it was a single use pad, now it could be five, you know. Maybe. Rick, I'm thinking. Sorry.
Um, what did you?
The buil- the building is perfectly clear. Be right in the corner. Can that sidewalk be extended, hook up with the sidewalk from the.
That was a comment.
Walk loose, they could do that.
That was a comment by the county, uh, so.
Yeah, we are. Yeah.
Again, this configuration, I think, allows us uh better grading opportunity to do that with the.
Correct.
Previously, we had driveways, and driveways are a little less flexible in relation to the building. So it would have been more difficult to do that, but I, yeah, our intent is to find a way to connect that.
Why, why we're up there, is that, can that be macadam instead of grass?
The emergency.
Yes.
Yes, the answer, simple answer is yes, I guess ultimately. That'll be the township's decision. Sometimes macadam is too inviting, so you get people that want to use it that shouldn't use it, but.
If we ever have to use it, we're gonna tear that up. We've been looking at the one up here behind Walmart. We've been tempted to go try and go over that. And that uh new development there, that comes out to one thirteen, there's a.
The red house track that you didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but the one that I look at every day when I go up Oak Drive is the one for Fox Lane, right? I can, that's a driveway, that's a road, someone's gonna turn up there.
Yeah. Well, that'll have a boulder right in the middle of it, so they're not gonna get too far.
As far as we're concerned. We'll do what you want there.
Cause you contain the rear trucks that are pretty heavy, if it's going straight and not making a movement, it's fine, as soon as you get it to make the turn. The torque there and everything, that it tear them up.
Since the roadway will be curved, there will be an, an apron there and sidewalk, so it will be have some level of visibility as well, so. Yeah, I think there's room to figure something out there, whether it's paving or some other hard surface that works, so.
Dave, were you trying to say something about the multi-tenant? No, I just, I just think, I mean, the, the depth is, is perfect for it, um, and I, I do think they'll fill it, and, and the thing you mentioned about nail salons and stuff, it's. It's with the cost of construction these days, it's tough for a nail salon to afford new construction. Um, not that they wouldn't have a billion costs, um. But. I mean, I, I do think. They could probably fill that. But it. There's not a whole lot of seventy-four hundred square foot tents. Out there looking around for space.
Yeah, I, I think the main thing is we wanted to keep it flexible.
Yeah.
So that we could divide it depending on what the need would be.
Yeah.
Uh, going back to the, the drainage feature, uh, obviously, we would have to pipe it for the portion that's from sidewalk to sidewalk with the. In fact, I. Zoom in a little bit, you can actually. Zoom in a little bit, you can actually see head walls, uh tight head walls there. So the intent would be to pipe uh that portion, the rest of it would remain open.
Back to the building again. When it was an auto zone or whatever it was. We had talked about the roof line. Had this spec building like this, what kind of roof line are you putting on this now?
Well, they're, it's required to meet the architectural standards in the R O district, so it has to have a peak, yeah. So, yeah, we're intending to comply with it, I don't have a rendering, we have not developed a rendering for that building yet, uh I guess we'll start to work on that. Um I did bring along, and this was shown previously, this is the Chase Bank. Um which again, it's. The intent is to comply with the R O standards with deep roofs.
If I recall correctly, within the single development, there's supposed to be some continuity between the building.
Uh it basically says residential character materials to be used, I think that. Something's similar to that, I'm paraphrasing it a little bit, I don't know that it's. Continuity so much, residential. Which is a challenge, because obviously, banks uh. Architectural plan is contemporary too, so trying to mix. Try to get their desire to have a contemporary building, but still adhere to what the ordinance requires. And usually, the with the smaller buildings, it's less of an issue, I guess I would say.
And I think one of the things we also is, as you get further along. One of the things you probably won't understand is the signage, if that's gonna be retail multi-tenant. Um I'm thinking back to the where the liquor stores, we spent a lot of time figuring out how to get the signage, because the. The applicant wants something that faces the road, but at the same time, we wanted to face the parking lot and how we worked that out, so.
Yeah, it's always a battle between what all tenants want, but the zoning ordinance allows. Each old battle, I think. We did receive what the desired sign package is from Chase, so we will start to put that together. Uh any other questions, the comments? Move anything, show a little bit.
A- anybody from those? Player you've commented on this ever?
Well, no, it is a big difference from what I. So it it looks.
The two comments that you had that we did try to address, since we now sidewalk sides of. The apartment, except for one quarters the neighboring. And then we will look at way to connect up to the barbed sidewalk. Uh any place we don't have sidewalk is on one side of the entrance drive. That's more because of grading and things like that. And as far as I'm concerned, if you're going to one of the retail uses and you're coming from the intersection. The sidewalk to get to those two uses from the intersection, we have a connection right there. But if you're coming from the other side, you would go up the first sidewalk anyway, then still get to the. Those uses, so it seems like that would not serve a great purpose anyway on the other side of the. The engine's driving.
I think our other comments that would still be relevant to this plan would be related to landscaping. The area that. Um so it's, it looks on the plan, it's like one of the wetland areas, and. So that that makes current condition, we have the kind of the wetland.
Yeah, where um where that hatching is was identified as wetland by our consultant, um. And that's basically what is the impoundment area from that stone structure. Um so from a regulatory standpoint, we obviously need a permit to do what we're proposing, I think it's. Permit we can acquire, the general permit for the B E P. Um it will essentially drain that area as well, um. We're not proposing to. To uh fill it or anything like that. And we we would add additional landscaping and we that farther.
Yeah, that was that was the main concern, is if it if it is a wetland, to treat it as such as as a naturalized area, that would be. Development, obviously, it's.
Yeah, that's the intent, other than where the the road.
When you're thinking about the landscaping, I know you're not gonna wanna heavily landscape the commercial portions up on Sunday Town, which I understand. But then I'll ask you to really try to think about how we buffer and landscape the residential player to minimize that impact.
Okay.
And and then my only other question, Leo, my mother-in-law wants to know where the R B is. Oh my God, really, you guys are killing me every time I see the one. Where are we? Where's the R B? Anything else?
Rick, are the plans that you're submitting, that you submitted, are they land development plans or conditional use?
Now, they're really, really got these refined uh architectures. Two days ago, so.
So it's still conditional use, so things like landscaping and wetlands. Okay, just so I don't.
Proceed with the conditional use approval as well, and yeah, we're gonna follow up with more detail later.
Okay, later, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Temporary sign origins, Mike, are you?
Yes. Okay, so temporary sign origins. So nothing has changed since the last iteration. And so I just wanted to go through some of the. Some of the items again for everybody as a refresher. So this, uh of course, is only addressing, it's a it's an amendment to the events to address temporary signage. Was anything that you see that, you know, the four yard sign or even the flag sign that you'd see nowadays? Okay, so we'll have two types of temporary, generally two types of temporary signs, limited duration signs and temporary signs, limited duration signs. Will be, there there will be a permit that's required, and a permit will be valid for one year, and they can renew it, so they can. Essentially perpetually have a temporary sign, but they do need to take it down, it does have to be temporary in nature, they can't have it on a permanent foundation, right? Yeah, so, so that's the first temporary sign, and they can't exceed thirty-two square feet. Or eight feet in height, so and the temporary signs, no fee would be required. They would have to put the date in which they erect the temporary signs, so we can track how long it's it's been out there. They ha- they can do that for thirty days, three times a year, okay, and. They can't exceed twenty-four square feet cumulative. Where they can have multiple yard signs, as long as they don't exceed twenty-four square feet. On a property. And they can have it up for thirty days again, and then three times a year, no permit required. They they can, but then that was the end for that whole year. And we discussed personal expression signs. We can't limit personal expression signs very much, so the quantity, they can basically be put up. You know, however many they want, however, we can regulate the size and location. And so the size would be regulated no more than three square feet, so it would be a typical one and a half by two-foot yard sign. Would be the maximum size that you can do. And just to give a little bit of perspective as to how many signs that would actually mean out in real life. So for the Hennings Lot, they have twenty-two establishments, they would only be allowed sixteen yard signs. In front. Okay, so it's not like every tenant gets a sign or two, they would only be allowed sixteen for their twenty-two establishments. Okay, so they're gonna have to try to find something unique for that lot. Pioneer Village where Domino's is, they have five establishments, they they were allowed eight temporary signs at any one given time. The Hardly Commons where Duncan is, they have nineteen establishments, they would only be allowed eight. Yard signs at any one given time, so again, they they would have to. Uh come up with something for them, and all be coordinating with each other, not just throw out their signs whenever they want to throw out their signs like they do. To that. And let's see, just going down the line, Ross Ziegler's establishment where Bullfrog Cafe is. Uh there's five establishments there, they. They would be allowed eight signs. Old Wawa Lot Lot would be the same, five and eight. Uh where Walmart is, there's nine establishments back there, they would be allowed sixteen. On that lot, and. Let's see, Mainland Point or Six um would be allowed eight temporary signs below, um.
So Mike, I apologize, I didn't probably say it, I missed it, it sounds like there's no correlation between the number of establishments and the number of crimes, so what's the. What's the gearing factor based on growth fundage?
The the property. For any given property, right? Mm-hmm, so any any property in the township would only be allowed um. Twenty-four square feet, so. So it doesn't matter if you're a small lot or a big lot, twenty-four square foot temporary sign would be the maximum that would be allowed. And if you're a big lot, which is anything above five acres with four hundred feet of frontage, you can have two. Very signs, just like the limited duration, you can have two, so Walmart and Hennings is sixteen and the others are eight. Right, got it, okay. And that's it in a nutshell. So again, nothing has changed since you guys heard this months ago. But now we're in a position, if you'd like to to uh make a motion and move this. Beyond the planning commission and recommend, if you want to recommend. Adoption of the ordinance, then we can put it in front of the board supervisor.
But it just says to me, most likely, based on his observations are, everybody. Nobody's coming close to that. Would you guys agree with that? I don't know.
There's not, there's a lot of non-compliance that's out there today, which is why we're pushing. For this ordinance amendment, because right now, our current ordinance does not regulate temporary signs in an enforceable manner.
I I guess where I was going, if even possible, make it even more restrictive, lower than them. Don't let Walmart put up sixteen signs or whatever you just said it is. You know, strangle it. I can't stand that stuff in this community, and I I don't I don't wanna be, you know, I wanna do it within the rules. Um but yeah, I I'd even bring that number down lower.
What's the example, what's the example, I'm trying to think where all these like property. There are one of these shopping centers where all these signs are, I just can't picture it, like.
You're talking like a great clips little sign that sits out front of Hennings Shopping Center.
Do those wind sale things also count?
They would not comply because they're too high, they can't be above eight feet. They can't be more than twenty-four feet, so you'd be allowed maybe one, as long as it doesn't exceed eight feet, but. Right, it would only be just maybe one of them for the entire site, that would.
Which is not that bad.
Business is long, right?
And they need. Um has has Andy gone through all this?
And you guys, yeah, and and we'll send it back to Andy, I mean, we've been back and forth. Looking at this, looking at model ordinance, uh trying to make it constitutionally appropriate, okay, and then custom. For lower Southford, and so we kind of.
I was thinking, you tell stories in the lease, that the leases only cover. It'll be facade signage and pylon or monument signage. They, when when it comes to putting other temporary signs, like a lot of leases will allow a tenant. To do a temporary grand opening sign, like the big tall ones, but but leases will always say, um. They'll always have a line in there that as long as it meets. In compliance with local ordinances. Um so in this case, they wouldn't. But.
So are you looking for action on this tonight?
I was looking forward to that, we wanted to move it forward.
Me personally, I don't I don't, I don't. It's something that's not really correct. I'm I'm guessing Scott, your your concern is we're gonna get twenty-four little signs going down Sunday Town bike along the frontage of Hennings.
Yep.
Yeah, it is.
Because where there are none now. Granted, not that they're gonna know that we passed this ordinance, right, but. Yeah, I don't feel start popping up, but that's what I was trying to think in my head, where does it exist now where they're not compliant, I can't think of it, but I believe you when you said there's. Yeah, they certainly do.
Exceed the size.
Yeah, they can have, it's. Three months at a time, right, so the entire year, so you'll never see. The Hennings Shopping Center Lot have twenty-four square feet, so basically sixteen yard signs, you'll never see. For the entire year, now they can have a limited duration sign out for the entire, which can be thirty-two square feet, but just one sign. A bunch of little signs, has to be just one sign, and they could just pack in all the information that they want. But it has to just be one sign, not to exceed thirty-two square feet.
You're gonna enforce that, are you gonna go out every day and take a picture and say that sign was there?
Have to, they have to have the date on the sign itself.
And if not, then you're just gonna go pull it?
We have the ability to do that, that's baked into the ordinance.
I imagine practically, that wouldn't happen unless. There was an obvious issue with too many or.
Right.
But 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 the reality is today, we have very little in the way of regulation, and so this is what we've established regularly.
You know, I mean, consider on that, if we went ahead with recommending this. To tighten down the regulations by a little more challenging than to loosen the regulation.
Kind of true.
Because once people are. I don't think people are doing, we don't think people are doing that, but once you start putting thirty signs up or whatever, there's twenty-four signs up. If you pass a regulation, you say, okay, we're gonna drop it down to twelve. I think you'll get more pushback.
So just in in perspective, I can even port up on screen, look at it, so sixteen lots on the Hennings Lot, the Hennings Lot. Notoriously is known, right, packing the frontage full of sign, and then once. A place like the the Junk Haller. Go through town and they see a bunch of signs, they always sneak their signs in there, and so I automatically. Am able to pull those because those aren't even their signs out front. But all the rest of the signs, and you add them all together, and there's a bunch of signs, but what this would only allow is eight signs. On one side of the entrance and eight signs on the other side of the entrance, when you spread those out, it's not nearly what we have seen. On that lot.
College homes and all that stuff.
Right, with everything packed, and no, so as. As another example, the mattress outlet, when they do that like. I pulled, must have been, I I lost count, it must have been like thirty or so signs throughout the township. Yeah, thirty-four, now that I remember. Um throughout the township, of course, they're not allowed because they're on purposes signs. And those will automatically be pulled, um but now they'll they'll actually be an enforceable limit to the onsite signs.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We recommend approval of the. Thank you. Fire V C District Amendments?
So I not bring any, I just hand out beside the illustrations that. So for a little bit of a reminder, we did these. We did these um test sites to illustrate. On the ground exam, how or lives, the draft that we are looking at currently would work out in the light. So in this case, um we looked at two different. And other property that. We can be of this one, since we have it in. These buildings that are shown in blue are the existing buildings. And in this scenario. And in this scenario, um the design team added. One new building and then um the part that's labeled number two with. She covered. So in this case, this is assuming that the older, the existing buildings were built in nineteen forty and there. By preserving them receive a density bonus. Um part of the the. Part of the reasoning behind doing this testing is to see how the site would work, if it if it. Would produce something that would be undesirable. Then we would have to look at what. Showed and see how we could fix and the other requirements and the zoning ordinance to. Change that. Um so with this, um a couple of notes came up with her review on Friday. Additions to existing buildings that we might want to address. But overall. Do you have impressions looking at this now? It it's showing some of the street trees that would be required as well as, of course, the parking that would. Be required for the different uses. And um as part of this, they would also assuming that one of. Drive, one of the existing drivers would be removed in case.
Does this kind of represent maximum density, like the the worst case scenario, or just a worst case scenario?
Um parking is limited too, like if if you have a number of certain, a number of parking. Spot that are required for use, it's going to really restrict. You'll max out the site. I'm taking into account step back from the buildable area, portion of that's gonna be done. So that's like a natural um limitation.
Yeah, I I think in terms of what developers would do, they're probably gonna want more. Residential units, I mean, for instance, the building number three, that house. Which I walked by on. Now would probably either get cut up into two units or three. The the house next door would immediately just off the sheet, that was cut in a two years.
Yeah, I think that was shown as just being one unit in there.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Or like a knock down camp, but.
Well, that that first one's the game, right?
Well, well, this whole property schemes, the the barn is number four.
Oh, four is the barn.
Yeah, they have, they have the barn, then they have the house, which they rent out right now, but then there's a big field right next to it, pretty big. VC.
Yes. Do you think there's a lot of impervious surface in these, like excessive impervious surface, even though, I mean, you want a more dense um. It all been pattern here, which makes sense, but like number two, Marshall. That seems a. That is like a big, just big parking area.
She's a burden slot now, or east park at the bottom, no, the second.
Oh, we look at the pharmacy example.
Yeah.
Right.
That's.
I don't know if that's.
So, yeah, we can move on to the second one, there are different scenarios that. First one. The first man is. Area one is a multifamily. For the one that you're on, the pharmacy, that that's showing a twelve square foot pharmacy, the maximum permitted. For for retail would be fifteen thousand square feet. So I think by showing this example with the pharmacy and the large parking lot, he's demonstrating that. This is possible, this size building would be possible even with the building length. Um the maximum building length. So. Um it's just something to consider that this big box kind of development would still be feasible in the village. District. Um and from this example, we we also might wanna consider how um. Corner blocks are addressed, and there's anything that really addresses. That we have standards in there for frontage occupation along primary or um. Uh principal streets or primary streets, streets of higher classification. Um but nothing that would address in the key, in case like this, where it seems appropriate for kind of a gateway treatment. Nothing that would call attention to the corner, which is something that being want.
So the language right now wouldn't pull that building to that corner, it could go anywhere along some town bike five. So you're showing it there, I mean, it could just as easily have.
Yes, and then some of the other scenarios where this site show. So that's. Show where the buildings are not.
Does this mean that's rent a job occupation?
So the front of the occupation is only available currently for um for. Properties with more than one building in there, so in this case. It wouldn't even have to be, I think we added that provision. Um but there are something favorable developments coming in that I know will drop in some. On the site. Um so that's something else to consider, that if you would want to have that before that frontage occupation. Then they would have to build some more. Front is along that street and put the parking to the back.
Looks like some of the parking might be in the front. Then other if we interpret. Not in the required right yard, but. For the facade.
For that side slot, is that the maximum building size? That seems smaller relative to the size of that lot. But yet I see in the other one, we've got two buildings, it looks like it's. Two buildings half that size, so is that the maximum building size for that parfor? Okay, then. And is, uh do these use the mo- the maximum impervious coverage?
I think so.
Okay. Well, that was my next question, actually back on gaming, but um did you check the floodplain on both of these sites, if there is a floodplain?
The order per word has to be floodplain right there.
No.
Yeah, cause we, that's one of the first.
I mean, for these purposes, this is hypothetical, I don't know.
This exercise is, we look at this, we say, we don't like the way this looks. That means we need to adjust our.
Your.
Orders, right?
Yeah, so they take the new language that we put in and go, okay, how would you talk against that, and kind of go, crap, that's not what I wanted. So it's a helpful extra time.
You know, it is, totally.
Well, and it's interesting, is when you look at that, the. Yeah, a small building, massive amounts of impervious surface.
It would not be a.
Okay, so she.
So so this is just bulk. Mainly the same.
I think the point is, the last thing we want is a wall remains, you know, that that wouldn't be what you would want, is to see.
Yeah.
My other comment is, I don't think. Configuration like this, if they didn't have a drive.
Right, they do the center.
Yeah, it's a pharmacy, they drive through, but. You're not seeing a pharmacy in practice.
Yeah, no, I I don't think so. The other thing too is, Claire, at least on this one, the way they're showing it. There the, there's nothing in the language where we're forcing the building to. Orient along the frontage, like it's actually perpendicular to the frontage, if I'm looking at the the configuration of the building, see how it's sort of running back along Alderfer as opposed to being pivoted? If I'm looking at it correctly.
It looks like it's running all over.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's a ties to me, yeah.
Yeah, now that one's fronting me.
This case, this is showing just the residential building. So purely residential building would be mid the site. So our thought was. Be.
Get there faster.
Would you, would you want a multifamily building, it's only three stories, I believe, there's fifteen units, but would you want that to be? At the entrance or Harley's Hill, or would you want me that would be mixed use with some kind of retailer or commercial on the ground floor and then. An apartment. Um units above that.
Should be in the back, because you wouldn't let the people walk out the front door and be right on the street. You want the second.
But do you want the parking in the front? Along Main Street and all you see is parking.
But we don't want that, that's what we don't want to.
You want the building in front.
We had the. Right?
So in this case, it's also taking advantage of the open space bonus, which is shown on the corner, so there. Yeah.
See, depending on the. Two-story, three-story, whatever. That's not, that's not too bad for. Lots of green. A residential building. It doesn't. Can visually congest that intersection, because CBS is right on the corner, visually congest that intersection. This is more setback on Main Street.
Isn't there a maximum building setback, is that what that second line is?
Yeah, I think we did.
Well, like, wouldn't that have to be between the two dash lines and not starting from that back line and further back?
But but Scott, you raised an interesting point, which I'm. Not entirely sure I agree with, but the the point to raise and make sure we talk it through. I think what we were trying to do is, as you come up Sunday Town Pike, the density should be getting. More concentrated as you move into the VC.
Right.
So, you know, I would, I would be looking for, the fact that that open space is closer to the intersection is actually sort of almost the inverse of what I would have expected the zoning to have.
Agreed, yes.
As you move away. The other end of the.
Right, I agree. With that intent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One more two.
So so Larry, before you jump off. So that's how that, they're showing it there, but based on how you showed to commercial, is is there something about residential that pushed them? To be on Sunday town, or is that just artistic license on who's there? Could they have just as easily have gone and put it up there, fronting on Alderfer, just the way we saw the commercial building?
Do you have? Why that building should be oriented towards the the street of higher. So in in the other example, you'll see that there are townhouses fronting on Alderfer and another building that would be taped on. On Main Street, so there is that in there already, they don't have to be along the main street. For me, the the corner that's giving me a little bit of a um. Example, that tree in the corner distinctly. And this to me also seems like they've probably kept on bigger building, so I need to check on that.
Yeah, I don't think this is very real.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you could probably do another townhouse.
Right, if you think to the school, right, that's, you know, fairly dense. Well, and and I swear with a little too, but. Think, if you're gonna have mixed use, I think you'd almost wanna have first floor re- first floor commercial, second floor resident.
Yeah, the problem is economically, that really. You need to have. Multiple level. Nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna do a two or three-story building, commercial on the first floor and two level.
But you could do separate commercial buildings and residential buildings on the same property.
Yeah, that's what this is trying to get at, but it could be more built.
Big developments down like. Orange and stuff like that, where they do those huge.
Yeah, there's some, there's really nice one in Malvern. But it's.
Yeah, right, you need. Yeah, they're falling.
Yeah, and and then they, in those cases, they don't make any money on the retail, it's just.
Right.
And they're only doing the retail because the township makes them.
Yep.
But the apartments pay for it to be, so they can cut a deal with the retail, that's what they need to do to fill. Either.
They can't get anything to go on the ground floor if they require.
Yeah.
So. In terms of having a mixed-use property, then perhaps just sticking with. They go and if the. Same family building, a small scale one comes in and. Would be okay though.
So, this is interesting, and I guess I'm just asking everybody else, so just like Scott shared his view, I hate this one.
Yeah.
Because the big split between it basically exposes the view to this big. If you could at least get both of the buildings oriented on the Sunday. Now you should have the frontage of the facade, the parkings behind, so how do we make that happen?
Requirement applying for this one?
Yeah. I have a few questions left in my head when I was reviewing this before this meeting, but. I too late to adjust. To adjust this, but that is something that I will bring up through the red jump patients.
I think the the cafe restaurant would be required to be in between those two lines, like it would need to be rotated and. Be more parallel with Sunday Town Pike and closer. And then the one that fronts on Alderfer is not part of the frontage occupation of Main Street, Sunday Town Pike, so it would need to be brought over. Be added to that frontage, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you could check, because we wouldn't want that, and if you can confirm that they wouldn't be able to do that, that would be good.
And you don't, you would have to ask for waiver to get a drive-through of any sort in a village commercial?
No waiver, it would be a.
Reason.
It's a zoning, right, so if they, if it's not allowed, then they need to get a man.
Right, those comments, though, you just couldn't. Doesn't eliminate a lot of retail in today's world.
Oh, it's true.
It it filtered it out, yeah.
On CBS pharmacies or whatever.
So what is the Duncan comments want to imply? Existing? Do they have some kind of contractual agreement to paint it, whatever color Duncan does as they want?
Well, we we have this. That we do, and we often end up, you know, we want. Whatever it is, it's better than the paint job and they did the. Which they spruced up. It was horrendous.
Yeah. Okay, man, it's it's a good exercise.
Well, yeah.
So that probably could be tweaked, um so I'll I'll talk with our design team and see what we can. Do to address these concerns and perhaps do when that's a little bit more um. Bill counts it totally maxed out more than what we're doing here, and um I'll work on the reservation.
Okay.
Also, when you look at the corner, this is the beginning of sort of a dense area coming down along Main Street, I wouldn't put anything in the corner, because across the street. Balance. What's on the residential side of that corner, you're never gonna have this.
Right.
So if you're coming down that six three, coming down sixty three, you want to put all the. Active new buildings, um, along the busy end of the road there, but I would keep an open area at the corner because you've got that across the street. And that gives you an entrance.
Yeah, but you really need that, like. I, I live like just off that area.
That one's the first building.
That would be, that would cause a lot of traffic.
And then you end up putting a sign, here's our villain. Because of what's across the way, when you picture a building in your, you know, the idea of a village design got both streets, both sides of the street.
Thing else, you know, this one I, we, we, um. We had a regional planning commission meeting last night, but we need our regional planning. And we are, I think the last time I, I mentioned it, we're in the process of updating the comparable plan. So we discussed the transportation chapters, which was actually pretty interesting. Very interesting, so, um, and I get one thing I'll just very quickly mention, which I was absolutely amazed by. Is a, a trial program that SEPT is doing, did, did you hear about this? They, they're, they're, um, uh, going to try a new concept, which they call micro train. And basically because they're, they need to, um. They feel they need to get rid of bus routes in the suburbs. So what the solution is, is to take the bus routes, punch it out a quarter or mile on each side. Then maybe add in some, uh, special destinations such as. Major employers, their schools and things like that, and it draws a zone, creates a zone. And then what they're gonna do is instead of a large bus, they will have small vans. And you will, all on your phone or on an app, you order the van within the, you have to be within. Uh, you'll order the van, they will either come and pick you up at your address or they will pick you up at a nearby intersection. And you need to be picked up in the zone and dropped themselves, but these zones are quite large. When they showed us last night, I'm from Telford and Sauterton, it kind of makes a curve and goes all the way to Landstall, so you could actually go for. Sauterton to Lanzo train station. Yeah, absolutely fascinating.
Is what we're suffering in this any zone?
Uh, we are in only a very small part of Lower South. But, you know, this is an experimental program that they're trying, they have some three test zones set up, they activated one of them. And, uh, it's, it's a fascinating concept. And, and the other thing is that the rides are cheap, they're like two bucks. It's, it's basically like an Uber, but it's cheaper than an Uber, so it's more like a radius around it. Point as opposed to a line.
Yeah, e- exactly, that's the real problem, so they figure as long as it doesn't lose more money than bus route loss.
If it's just a, you know, revenue neutral, then they're okay with it. Those fascinating and, um, but you know, Eric, Eric brought in a lot, a lot of things. We will continue on that through the balance of the year, we probably, we had to figure it out.
You guys hung in there great, any comments from you?
That's my boy, that's my boy.
And this is Sean O'Donnell, a, a young engineer from our office, um, aim to see.
So in reality, the one person for public was really here, we awarded him pretty. It's like you're, you're the most polite audience member we've had.
You're, you're a whole bunch of followers.
Matt, by the way, nice that you decided to come this one, but you weren't here the last one.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Alright. See everybody next slide.
Have a good night, John Kennedy. John, I just wanted.